Council to order September 22, 2020 via Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Dodd.
Present.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and various other city staff. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, the agenda is approved. Okay, this evening, we have two proclamations. First one is ostomy awareness day. I'd like to read. City of Corvale proclamation. Whereas an ostomy is a type of surgery that creates an opening in the abdomen that allows for the removal of bodily waste into an ostomy pouch on the outside of the body or a surgically created internal reservoir where a person has lost the normal function of digestive or urinary systems due to various medical conditions or injuries. And whereas approximately 725,000 to 1 million Americans have an ostomy with approximately 100,000 new ostomy procedures performed each year. Whereas ostomy or continent diversion surgery can occur at any age and does not lower life expectancy. Whereas largely through the efforts of the United Ostomy Associations of America Incorporated and its over 300 affiliated support groups, Americans needing these surgeries are becoming more aware of opportunities for education, mutual aid, advocacy, and support that are of great benefit to them and their families. And whereas the city of Corvale is committed to increasing public understanding of ostomy and dispel fear of this surgery, reminding the public this is a lifesaving procedure and supporting public education to ensure that those who are living with ostomy face no discrimination and are accepted as normal, healthy individuals. Whereas to increase public acceptance of ostomy surgery and continent diversion surgery and to help the country better understand that ostemies are lifesavers, Corvale is commemorating the 10th anniversary of Ostomy Awareness Day. Therefore, I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of the city of Corvale, do hereby proclaim October 3, 2020, as Ostomy Awareness Day. Ostemies are lifesavers and call upon all residents of Corvale to unite this day in showing of support to shine a positive light on this lifesaving surgery. Sign this 22nd day of September 2020, John A. Lundell, Mayor. And this evening, joining us, we have Gina Carlisle. And Gina, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name, but we'd be glad to hear a few words from you.
You said it just right. Just, just a quick background of how I got my ostomy. I fought ulcerative colitis for several years. And after not having any meds to work and always having to be aware of where I went and bathrooms, simple even shopping trips was hard for me to do because I just always had to have a bathroom. And if I, I felt the urge to have to go, I just, I had like 30 seconds to get somewhere to a bathroom. So it just, it tied me to a bathroom. So I decided to have the surgery and it's been six plus years and it's just totally changed my life, just opening me up to be able to live again. So I'm super glad that Mayor Lundell has done this for me and put the proclamation in. And I hope to take the proclamation and be able to have maybe the papers and even maybe the news is do something on that day and run something too. So, and also David Jacoby, the representative for Iowa. I started working with him and he said he didn't have time to get it for this year, but hopefully for next year for all of Iowa, I hope to get something going too. So.
Great.
My outreach on it, so.
Well, thanks Gina for bringing this to our attention and happy to do the proclamation. And you could work with Thor to get a nice version of the signed copy. I'll go down to City Hall and sign a nice version of it. He can.
Alrighty.
Okay, well, thanks.
Thank you.
You can stay as long as you'd like or you can, you can, you can leave. It's up to you.
I got lots of stuff going on here, so it's been a big day. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, one other proclamation for Fire Prevention Week in Corvale. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. According to the United States Fire Administration, residential structure fires are the greatest risk for fire, killing over 3,500 people in 2018. And whereas the Corvale Fire Department and the city of Corvale are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Corvale. And whereas Corvale residents should identify places in their homes where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. Install and maintain smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas Corvale residents should plan and practice at home, fire escape plan to be ready to respond to alarm by going outside immediately to a designated meeting place. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, serve up fire safety in the kitchen, reminds us to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire since cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John A. Lundell, Mayor of the city of Corvale, Iowa, proclaim October 4 through the 10, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week and urge everyone to be aware of their surroundings. Respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately and support the public safety activities and efforts of the Corvale Fire Department. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Corvale to be affixed. Sign this 22nd day of September 2020, John A. Lundell, Mayor. I believe we have our fire chief, Ori Switzer, with us this evening. Ori, as a former firefighter myself, it was an honor to do this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to accept this proclamation. And I do have just a couple little things I wanted to mention about Fire Prevention Week. This year, of course, everything being a little different with the COVID-19 pandemic, this is typically the week that we would be in all the elementary schools. So we do that during Fire Prevention Week. And this year with everything going on, we can't get into the schools. So what we are proposing to do or we're working on doing with city staff is we are recording some fire safety videos, some videos of our equipment, and we will be providing those to the school, all the elementary schools. We've met with the principals, they're all in agreement with it. Along with those, our videos will be some links to the National Fire Prevention Association's webpage, some other fire safety type of videos. And along with that is some lesson plans from that same organization that will be able to allow the teachers to do that in class and then also offer it to the kids that are doing virtual learning from home. So that's, that's one thing we had to change this year. So we're going to give it a, give it a whirl. We're still planning on hosting our regular open house, the last Sunday of that week. We'll be releasing all that, all that information here shortly. It'll be that Sunday at the end of that week. So a couple of other things we got going. I did want to let yourself and the rest of the council know that the new fire engine that we ordered about a year ago, a little over a year ago, that was a little delayed also because of COVID-19. But it is scheduled to be delivered here on Thursday. We'll be getting it Thursday afternoon. So along with city staff helping us with this, we are going to do a Facebook Live pushing in ceremony. So that's where we push the fire truck in the station for the first time. We have not done that, to my knowledge, any may, here in the city. So it'll be the first time we've done that. But we're going to start that event 6:30 on Thursday, the 24th. There'll just be a short little program, a couple of words from myself, a couple from the committee that designed the truck. And then we will push it in and put it in service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ori. Who's doing the pushing? I guess, guess we don't know that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we need to turn the sound down.
Oh, I was just, I was just asking, Ori, who gets the, who has to push it in the station?
Well, the whole, all the department members are going to push it. But with safety concerns now, we actually do have somebody using the power and backing it up. It'll just look like we're pushing it in.
Okay. The public may wonder why we bought a fire truck you have to push as soon as you get it.
Yeah, well, one of the things we'll talk about Thursday night is that the history of doing that event goes way back to when everything was horse drawn and they couldn't push the, they couldn't get the horses to back the vehicles in or the apparatus. So that's kind of where the history comes of pushing, pushing the apparatus back into the station. So.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Ori. Thanks to your whole department. Okay, moving on to item five is citizen comments. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests from citizens to speak to us tonight?
I believe we have two in the audience tonight.
Okay. Recognize that face.
Alrighty. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Barry Bedford, for those who don't know me. And for those who are watching that don't know me, I'm a candidate for the city council seat for the special election, which is next Tuesday, coming up fast. And I want to thank the council and the mayor for setting this as election so the citizens of Corvale can use their votes as their voice and, and have a part in selecting the next councillor. I also want to thank the other candidates, both Nick, I mean all Nick, Hi, and Heather, who are running along with me. In my brief interactions with them, I have found that they all care about Corvale. They all have good ideas and they want to see Corvale succeed. And I'm grateful for that and I'm grateful for their participation. For those viewers who are going to be voting next week, you know, I, I, I ask for your consideration. I recommend that you go to my website, bedfordforcorville.com, or my Facebook account to see more about me, my background, my positions and all. And I ask the viewers who are going to vote to vote. Use your vote as your voice and help bring Corvale to a point where all of us really are proud to call Corvale our home. I think most of us do that, but we can always improve. And so I encourage you to vote next Tuesday at, on the 29th. And Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for this time.
We can't hear her.
Hi.
There you go.
So first of all, I wanted to say how much I appreciate Chief Crone meeting with Kevin Sanders over the summer to discuss issues of racial equity. And I look forward to seeing what Mr. Sanders has to say today. I look forward to the analysis of the traffic data, creating a citizens review board and training the department to work better with all of the members of our community, especially people of color. I want to support the partnership with the NAACP to work on the proposed ordinance to improve the relations between the police department and the members of our black community. And in terms of finding new police officers for our department, I'm confident that we'll find qualified diverse officers with the help and resources of the NAACP. And finally, I just wanted to say, Corvale is not the same place it was 30 years ago with the resignation of Tom Gill after his racist comments about Black Lives Matter. I think it was pretty obvious, we need new voices that represent the community. No disrespect to Chief Bedford. But let's bring diversity, equity, inclusion to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us this evening?
All right. Hi, my name is Dan Cobble and I am a lifelong Corvale resident. I would just like to say that I would like to thank the council for holding them election. I think that the election was a necessary thing and I think it's good to have that everybody will be able to have their voice heard. That said, I think that with the election, we need to have people focused on the future and new ideas, new blood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's very important for people to, to put, allow, to elect a candidate that has a new vision for the, for the city and a candidate who has, is putting new ideas on the table. And again, no respect to Barry Bedford, but I think that his ideas have been, I mean, he had his time to make an impact on the policing in Corvale, which is one of the most major issues facing our community. And I think that if he was going to change that issue, he would have already changed it. And he's had his time and I think we need new blood. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And I'll just encourage the citizens of Corvale to consider all the candidates. And there's a lot of information out there via social media and so forth. And I'm sure any of them would be willing to, to speak to you as well. Anyone else? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I think we will move on to item number six. And this is a presentation and discussion with Kevin Sanders. Kevin is the president of the Iowa City branch of the NAACP. I've had the pleasure of meeting him once prior and he's an outstanding person. I really look forward to, to this discussion. But Kelly, would you or Shane want to do a more formal introduction?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, did you mention my name?
Yeah, well, Kevin is the Iowa City President of the NAACP. He's a friend of mine, he's been incredibly helpful, bounced ideas off in the last several months. And he, like I, is a tremendous aficionado of lunch.
Thank you, Chief Crone. First of all, I'd like to thank the city council members of Corvale. I think you're doing a, a good job, especially during the time of all this unrest. I like some of the comments that have been made. I know in the past, there have been some comments that were, were disheartening to listen to, but I won't get into that right now. I basically want to talk about some of the objectives of the NAACP. Some of our objectives are to seek enactment and enforce, enforce federal, state, and local laws, securing civil rights. Also to inform the public of the adverse effects of racial discrimination and to seek its elimination. To educate persons as to their constitutional rights and to take all lawful action to secure the exercise thereof and to take any other lawful action in furtherance of these objectives, consistent with the NAACP's Articles of Incorporation and its Constitution. Now at this time, I would like to be a little bit concise and really place emphasis on the work between the NAACP and specifically Corvale law enforcement under the direction of Shane Crone. Shane was instrumental in signing a duty to intercede agreement, which, which was to hold all law enforcement officials accountable. And this is stemming from a meeting we had with all Johnson County law enforcement in June. And that's when I first met Shane Crone. Since that time, we've had multiple meetings to discuss his police department participating in educational trainings hosted by the NAACP and other consultants recommended by the NAACP. And that's currently in process, as far, in progress as far as the scheduling right now with other Johnson County law enforcement agencies. Chief Crone has been very transparent. We've discussed the disparities, the challenges to diversifying the police department. One concern was minority applicants having some struggles with passing the test. And we talked about maybe pre-testing prior to the actual test. I think that's a good idea. And we also talked about promoting applications through the NAACP network. And unfortunately, at this time throughout the United States, I know it's very difficult for minorities to want to become a law enforcement official concerned with what's going on. So we're going to continue to work on that. We've also talked about the city of Corvale passing anti-racial profile ordinance and creating a civilian review board. I have already assisted Shane with, by providing recommendations. I know that's in progress right now. So I think at this time, I think that Shane is demonstrating leadership and with the support of the city, Corvale City Council. So I'm pleased to say that at this point, I see progress. And that's, that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And thanks for all your assistance. And it's not just the police department, I certainly want to say, because as far as increase in the diversity of our applicants for our boards and commissions, we will certainly call on, on you and your colleagues in NAACP to, to help us increase, increase our pool of applicants across the city for, for jobs and boards and commissions of all types.
And we will be honored to assist you in any way that we can, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Kelly, is there anything more you'd like to add to the discussion?
No, I think Kevin hit on really the main points of what will ultimately end up in the ordinance. Kevin is reviewing the ordinance that was provided by Kevin and the NAACP. There's a couple of amendments that'll need to be worked out in regards to Iowa law and some of the items that are in that ordinance. But Kevin's provided us the name of an attorney that works on behalf of the NAACP. So Kevin will have a conversation with that with the goal that by the next work session, we would have a final ordinance for you all to review. And we do have, the selection process is coming up very soon for officer selection. And that will be done again within, with Johnson County. And Kevin is already working with us on getting those application or getting that word out. But we do encourage anyone to, you know, solicit those to people's participation in that whole process. And so hope that all of you, if you know of good candidates, will encourage them to go through that process because that's coming up, coming up on October 10th is when the joint testing will be with Johnson County Sheriff's Department.
And Kelly, is the, is the ordinance going to be kind of the, is it kind of an omnibus piece of, of, of legislation? I guess I'm asking because I, you know, about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I brought up some concerns about not having a coherent camera policy. Will that be included in that or is that going to be something separate that we discuss?
That would be a separate policy, yeah. This would address, you know, the four major components of testing, recruitment, the community policy, or the community board. So those, and then also the review of traffic data as well.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I just want to make sure, I feel we are here, but you know, this isn't a check the box kind of an issue that say, we did this, we're moving on. And this is ongoing and enduring from my perspective. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're continually moving forward on this and that's all encompassing.
Mr. Gross, I, I'm glad that you said that because Shane and I did have an understanding that this is more of a long-term commitment to the Corvale community.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Sanders, I just had a question if, you know, we've been in touch with a little bit with the Iowa Freedom Riders and they had their list of demands for Iowa City and I think they wanted to share that with Corvale. And I wondered if you had any reflections on those particular items and how they might relate to Corvale and how we can work towards some of those as well?
I have not seen any of the IFRs, their material, so I can't comment on that at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I actually had a question too, just about some of the other areas where we could receive assistance. And, and one of the things that, that I am interested in and one of the things that I think that we need, we need a lot of assistance with is reaching out to voices and communities that, that aren't traditionally heard from. And, and I feel like, I feel like that's, you know, an area we need to really focus on hearing from folks that have not always been included from the black community, of course, absolutely, but also from other BIPOC communities. So I'm wondering about how the outreach can be expanded and, and if, how, if, and how the NAACP could help us with that? Are there opportunities to partner with other organizations like LULAC? Maybe some other local organizations? Because I really want to make sure that we are putting forth a strong effort to engage communities that have not always been included.
I, yeah, I do, I agree with you and I think there's always room to collaborate. The NAACP just doesn't collaborate with any organization. If their goals aren't in alignment with our vision, then of course we will. Like for example, with voting, the NAACP is more than welcome to, 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 to meet with anyone to discuss projects. I, I think it's a good idea and we can do that, but that's just a protocol of the NAACP that we have to make sure that the, the goals are in alignment with our vision. But I'm more than open to entertain that idea.
Awesome, thank you. I think, and I think that, again, as part of the long-term work that we do, we, we have to always be thinking about that. How are we, I mean, really getting into marginalized communities and being really intentional about really hearing, hearing from folks?
I think it would also be a good idea to, and maybe this is something that would be a part of Chief Crone's purview to really reach out into those communities as far as community policing, community outreach. I think that would be a good idea. For example, I know that the previous Iowa City Police Chief, Jody Maderly, he did an outstanding job of reaching out to the leaders and allowing the leaders to come speak to him about any concern they have. And aside from the leaders, just individuals in the community, they felt comfortable going directly to him as a, as opposed to like a filtering process to get to him and convey their concerns. I think that would help as well.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm sorry, you're welcome.
Mr. Sanders, thank you so much for working with our chief of police and with our city administrators. And we certainly look forward to hearing more from you and look forward to reading the ordinance and just a great start to our wanting to be unbiased in so many areas of the government. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a great start in the right direction, just taking small steps. That's, that's the best we can do at this time, but we have to do it together.
Agreed. Great. Well, thank you, Kevin. Any more comments before we move on? I really look forward to working with you. I I really look forward to working with you.
Likewise, not at this time.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you. And feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns.
Okay, we'll be in touch, I'm sure. And Shane will buy your lunch next time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. See you later. Oh, that was very good. Okay, moving on to um item seven, the official zoning map. This is a a familiar item, uh as are the next couple. Uh it's third and final consideration uh uh adopt adopting the 2020 updated zoning map. The current map has been seeing many updates in recent decades, but it has not been updated or approved in any official capacity. So this is just an update of the zoning map. It doesn't change any existing zoning changes. Don, uh ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 1009 and ordinance amending the Corville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664 as previously amended by adopting a new official zoning map for the city of Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes. It's a third and final, all ayes. Uh, item eight is an ordinance similar is to adopt the 2020 updated land use map. The 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 previous one was a zoning map. This is the land use map. Similarly, it's just an update of changes have been made over the years, and it's just a a new version, and it doesn't change any existing land use decisions. Don?
Ordinance number 2020 dash 1010 and ordinance amending the Corville Community Plan 2014 Edition by adopting a new official land use map for the city of Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodds. Discussion? Roll call.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
The ordinance passes all ayes, the third and final consideration. Item nine is a Scanlon Farms South Ridge. This is also the third and final consideration of a change of the land use for a 3.49 acre parcel of the Scanlon Farms South Ridge development to mixed use. Don?
Ordinance number 2020 dash 1011 and ordinance amending the Corville Community Plan to reflect certain property generally known as a portion of Scanlon Farms, South Ridge, Corville, Iowa to be designated mixed use in place of neighborhood commercial use. Introduced third and final consideration by council member Dodds, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
The ordinance passes all ayes, third and final consideration. Item 10 is the 12th Avenue Ash Tree Replacement and Streetscape Rehabilitation Project. Sherry, I'll let you um give us the bid report and describe the project in a little more detail.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this-
Sherry Prowl, the director of Parks and Rec. Just want to do your full introduction.
Thank you. Um, this project will replace the failing ash trees along 12th Avenue from Second Street to Sixth Street in the town center area and will also take care of sidewalk reconstruction from where those trees over the years have pushed the sidewalk panels up and made them uneven. So there will be some um tree wells that will be expanded. There will be some additional landscaping in the tree wells as well as replacement of the trees and fixing of the sidewalk. Um, we opened bids on 915 and received three bids with a low bid, a high bid, I'll start with high bid, high bid of 119,203, all the way down to a low bid of 85,903 was the range. Our low bid was 3.2% below our engineer's estimate, and it was from Jay Harding, Inc. Um, this will include, we are recommending that we include the base bid as well as alter the alternate, which will um install barriers around the under underneath the soil, underneath the sidewalk, around all of the tree wells so that that sidewalk encroachment underneath and pushing of those panels won't happen in the future. And we would recommend awarding that low bid of $85,903.11 to Jay Harding, Inc.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, item B is a resolution accepting the bids and awarding the construction contract. Don? You may be muted, Don.
He frozen?
I think he's, oh, there he moved.
You're up, Don.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the 12th Avenue Ash Tree Replacement and Streetscape Rehabilitation, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion? Roll call?
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item C is for the same project approving the contract and bond documents.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the 12th Avenue Ash Tree Replacement and Streetscape Rehabilitation, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Sherry, I just have a question for you. Um, this is for this particular segment of of 12th Avenue. Will you be coming to us with um other portions of other streets uh that for similar rehabilitation?
Um, good question. Um, I am helping with this because the trees were the leading factor on this particular one. Right now, we have most of the other streetscapes under um uh treatment for those ash trees. These trees, when we started our ash tree treatments, I think this will be four years ago, these trees were already in failing health, and we chose not to treat them. So right now, we are um holding our own with our ash tree treatments and and I'm having um good success with that along Highway Six on 23rd Avenue, I believe is the other one, and 25th Avenue.
Okay, great, thanks. Well, it's just startling to me that the large ash trees that have really gone downhill. It just seems like this summer has been hard on them, and I know it's been a hard summer with the drought and derecho and so forth. But there are some significant ash trees that we're we're losing all over the city, it seems like, but we knew it was coming. So, okay, Don, the resolution, please.
Already.
We've already had it.
Yep.
Roll call, roll call.
Yeah. Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Okay, resolution is approved, all ayes. Moving on to item 11, Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project. This accepts the replacement of an eight-inch diameter sewer line on Fourth Avenue between Fifth Street and Highway Six. I know I would entertain a motion for pay estimate number two, final to Maxwell Construction for the Fourth Avenue Project. Moved by.
So moved.
Moved by Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Uh, I think that was Dodds. Uh, pardon me if I got got that wrong. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion is approved. Now the resolution accepting the project is complete.
Resolution accepting the Fourth Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project as completed, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call?
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Okay, resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 12 is West Land Use Fees. This is a resolution that acknowledges payment in full of the West Land Use Area Connection Fees for the Veritas First Edition, Corville, Iowa.
Resolution acknowledging payment in full of the West Land Use Area Connection Fee for Veritas First Edition, Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by council member Dodds, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 13 is the Governor's Traffic Safety Contract. This is the 2021 Highway Safety Grant of $24,900 to cover 350 overtime overtime hours of high visibility traffic enforcement and required training, related travel, traffic education materials, one in-car video camera, and one PBT. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving an agreement with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for Traffic Services, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 14 is a discussion of the Interstate 80 and First Avenue Interchange and Build Grant Update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, we just thought uh it would be appropriate now that we've received the funding for the build grant um to um remind folks of what will be, this funding will be used for because it is a little bit unusual of a interchange, a one that we haven't had before, but um there's been others in the state of Iowa. First of all, I would just like to acknowledge um Ellen Hubble's um work on the build grant itself. Um, we received notice last week that we did receive 20 and 20.5 million dollars. And that in conjunction with the DOT funding that they already have allocated would fully fund the project. And so um we did, this was our third time of writing the grant, third time was a charm, and just thank Ellen for that. Um, also, um Dan Holder, our city engineer, has worked a lot on this project as well. Um, the information we um each time was more detailed that we were able to provide the the um federal grant through the federal grant. And so just appreciate that. And finally, just thank um all of our congressional delegation senators Grassley, Ernst, and Congressman Lopes because they worked really hard um on getting us this funding, and so appreciate their efforts. So I'm just gonna turn over to Dan to briefly tell a little bit about this project. I just think it's important for all of you and for the community to know exactly what this funding will be going toward. So Dan?
Thanks, Kelly. Uh, John, would you put the dry up, please? All right, so well, what you see here is the um proposed improvements to the IED First Avenue Interchange Exit 242. Um, IED runs left to right through the drawing, and First Avenue runs uh top to bottom uh through the drawing uh as John is showing there. Uh, this proposed interchange will be what's called a diverging diamond interchange or DDI. Uh, and benefits of this uh type of interchange is that it allows um a high volume and a safe volume of left turn traffic to safely uh enter and exit from First Avenue onto the interstate, uh which there is a high, as you all are probably well aware, there's a high volume of left turn traffic uh at this interchange today, and will continue to grow into the future. So what I'll do is I'll go start from the bottom, uh First Avenue at the bottom, and kind of work to the north and should describe some of the elements that will be included in the interchange. Uh, first, uh starting to the north, it'll start right north of Ninth Street, and it'll go up to a new signalized intersection right there. Yeah, thank you, John. Uh, what that will be, that will provide access, uh one, easterly uh on IRL Landing Place uh be the next exit, the new exit into IRL Landing to provide access in and out of the the district. And then also, and almost more importantly, is to the left or the west, it will provide a signalized intersection for uh the tanker trucks that come in and out of Bajuan Pipeline Company to uh access First Avenue, because I'm sure a lot of you are aware today, it's it's not a a very safe situation where they come onto First Avenue mid-block, and there's no signal where they try to, you know, come onto the uh First Avenue. And so um it's just really not very safe, and the volume of those tankers are 40 to 50 tankers per day. They each carry 9,000 gallons of fuel, and so we anticipate that will only uh increase as time goes on. So a very important safety element is to provide that signalized access for the tankers on and off of First Avenue. So then as you go north, continue north, uh First Avenue, you come to another signalized intersection right there. And once you get the green light there, you will cross the left side or go, as you go across IED, you'll be on the left side or what appears to be the wrong side of the uh bridge. But what this again does is allows free left turn access uh up and onto the interstate uh without having to stop and provides uh again, safe and high volume uh um numbers of left turns safely onto the interstate. So if you want to continue north on First Avenue, you would go and kind of turn to the right there a little bit, again, come to a signalized intersection. And once you have the green light, you would go back and cross over to the right side and then move on uh on the First Avenue as you normally would. Um, one thing I can talk about too is the new uh trail system. Uh, if you can see the blue lines there, I will start at the bottom again, uh this off the Ninth Street by Trader Joe's. That blue line will be the new uh realigned trail system. It will this time uh at the south align to the east side of First Avenue, and so the west side like it is today. As as you go north, everywhere John's cursor is, there'll be a tunnel underneath IRL Place so that the there will, you know, a direct conflict. Uh, you keep going north, and there's a a a mode there, a node uh for potential future extension to the east uh directly down to IRL Landing along the Iowa River. Uh, as you go north from that node, you go again in the tunnel underneath the uh new eastbound IED on ramp. And then you'll come out, and you actually go the red there as you go over IED is a bridge. So you'll be overhead on the bedbridge, a bike tunnel, bike bridge as you go over IED. Then as you continue north, you go back into a tunnel, and there's a long tunnel about 260 feet, a long tunnel that will go underneath uh the First Avenue and the north, northerly interstate ramps. And you'll come out, and then you'll be uh on the surface and back to the west side uh where the trail alignment is today. So um it's it's a complicated project, but it's the one that's much needed based on today's uh traffic and anticipated growth in the future, and it will provide a much safer um access on off the interstate and through the intersection for both vehicles and pedestrians. Um, as far as schedule goes, Kelly's already talked about the budget and the 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 funding that we finally have in place for that. As far as schedule goes, the DOT's uh portion of the um funding is currently programmed in year 2024. Uh, so we're gonna talk to them, see if we can advance that schedule now that we have the build grant in place. So we'll be talking to them later this week about uh seeing if we can advance that, uh, just so we can get that built in that timeframe. So with that, I would answer any questions that any of the council might have.
Dan, have you talked about the staging of construction and and um I assume we'll be able to maintain some level of traffic movements during the process?
Yeah, this as as you might imagine, the staging is very complicated for this type of a interchange over the interstate, both keeping um, you know, uh all the lanes of the interstate moving uh at all times as well as through traffic up or stabbing. So uh it's a very complicated staging uh program, but Howard Green, our consultant, has done a good job with that. And so they are continuing to work on that and refine that. And um there'll always be vehicular access through First Avenue at all times.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you. That was a good idea, Kelly, to include that on the report. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Ellen, for your work on this project. Okay, moving on, uh item 15, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent calendar A through M inclusive.
Okay, moved by Dodds, seconded by.
Second.
By Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call?
Gross.
Aye.
Dodds.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved as presented, all ayes. Uh, item 16, city admin- Item sixteen, city administrator report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. First of all, I would just like to note that the Extreme Arena and the Green State Field House is now open. We had our official activities obviously last week. And this weekend will be the first major youth basketball tournament that will be held at the Field House. And we had significant number of reservations already at the Marriott Hotel as a result of that this weekend's activities. And then coming up from October ninth through the eleventh will be the USA Wrestling event as well. So there are some activities going forward. The arena staff is doing a great job of making sure that we follow different COVID procedures during the activities that are held there. Just like to note, a couple of folks on this, number one, that the CDB has been extremely, Iowa City Corvoo Convention Visitors Bureau has been a very, very important partner. And we wouldn't have been able to get to this point without their assistance. And so thank Josh and the rest of his staff for that. And we also had an extremely good group on construction. And Mortenson Construction headed this up, and I think we can be very proud of the facility that they built. Obviously, they had a lot of local subs as well that participated in that project. And so just thank them for those efforts. Just remind folks again, next Tuesday, September twenty ninth is the election, special election to fill the Corvoo City Council seat. All of the sites are open. So we will be having all seven precincts are open. So people should plan on going to their normal site. Although Ellen, I believe is it the one in the research park, correct, that has been moved?
Yes, that's right. I can look it up quickly here.
I think it's been moved.
Three. Precinct three is in Kirkwood now, I think.
Moved from the Hygienics Lab to Kirkwood College. So just remind folks in that neighborhood to that they'll have a new location. But they should plan on going to their normal site. Also, just remind people again, October tenth is the next site time for testing for police officers. And so encourage people to go to our website and get information. And people should note that by participating in this, they're getting two for one because they'll also be testing for Johnson County Sheriff's Department as well. So this is a good opportunity for them. If you're interested to be able to get to areas. Also, would just ask Sheri to give us, to give all of you an update on the NESTs that they have been able to develop real quickly. And also the hybrid camp program that they put together very quickly and have good results and numbers that have been able to participate so far. But her staff has done an excellent job of putting these together. And so Sheri, if you would just give them an update on where we're at on those.
Yes, thanks, Kelly. I'll start with our our hybrid day camp. We since the start of school have run an all day camp with wraparound before and after school program services. We ran it for the first two weeks at the recreation center. And then on Monday opened our second location at Community of Christ. So we have two locations. We're serving sixty seven children right now and twelve of those are on nearly are receiving scholarship funds to be able to participate and be able to do so at a very low cost. So we are helping, we're helping those children every single day, complete their work. Learning how to do all the Zoom meetings and get them to their small groups and just navigating the whole system of online school. Then this coming Monday, we will switch with the when the hybrid program goes into effect. We will have some children on A days and some children on B days and will still continue to operate the two locations as well as we will reopen all of our our after school programs. We are not going to run our before school programs while we are in hybrid program as well. But we were doing well. They were next week, I believe, we start trying to take advantage of the lunch program. Whoever likes to walk across the street to northwest, the rec center kids would and pick up a lunch there. And just having a lot of fun after school is out, just like we do with summer camps. So we transition right into enrichment programs and and you know, run the sillies out and just have a lot of fun with the kids. We are taking volunteers currently if there are community members who just want to see what this school online is all about. And we will, we have a volunteer application that they could stop and pick up at the Corvoo Rec Center. In addition, we're running, we are starting up here at the end of September or first week of October, depending on which location. Additional programs that we are calling NESTs across the across the school district area, a number of nonprofits and different agencies have gotten together to develop these programs that we're calling NESTs, which stands for nurturing every student together safely. And these are programs that are not necessarily like the hybrid camp program where they're with someone every day, all day. But being able to provide families with an opportunity to access resources during this very difficult time. A lot of them depend on, you know, the school district does so much work in the area of helping families with resources. And right now, with them not able to be in the schools, they don't have that face to face contact with people who can say, hey, we can help you connect. And so a lot of this is about supporting those families. Supporting families who may have socioeconomic challenges, may have English as a second language challenges, just anything along those lines. And we're trying to provide them with things like reliable Wi Fi, adult help with technology, adult help with academics, enrichment activities, access to, I can't read my writings, sorry, access to different resources I've already talked about. So whether it be mental health resources or needing to access the food pantry or things like that. And then healthy snacks are also infused into all of these programs. So I reached out to a number of my, my strategy was in Corvooville to reach out to our nonprofit partners as well as different community buildings or or church buildings that were within different areas of schools that we wanted to have to be able to support those families. So we have, we will be starting a NEST at the at Life Church over on, I think that's is it comes across, I think that's twenty second Avenue and turns into Camp Cardinal Boulevard. And that was with Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County. So they're going to be running a Monday, Thursday morning program. And they are looking to support first through sixth graders who will come in and be able to do their schoolwork during that time with adults and older siblings. They were, they want to help those families who have older siblings who are actually doing the schoolwork with those children at home. And that one is open, working with Borlaug and Kirkwood Elementary Schools. Then we're opening one at the at Genesis Church with the Iowa Children's Museum. And that's going to be on Thursday afternoons after the after school time period. And that is focused on enrichment, access to resources, snacks, as well as the Iowa Children's Museum is going to do a location Monday and Wednesday afternoons from one to four at the Iowa Children's Museum. And though the the Genesis Church location, we're supporting Kirkwood and Central families there. And then the Children's Museum would be open to anybody there, supporting those who've chosen all online services this year for the first trimester. And this would get kids out of the house and be able to interact with with enrichment activities and fun. And then the Corvoo Public Library staff and friends of the public library are going to do one at Old Town Hall. And that would be serving children from Central in that part of the community. We're working with the Iowa City School District's student and family advocates at all of this, the elementary schools that I talked about to be able to reach out and to fill these spots. We are keeping that a very low number for COVID reasons, but also to make sure that we're really making an impact and being able to serve these families and and get them the the help that they need to transition during this time of being at home or being home part of the time for school.
So that's a lot of programs and a lot of activities that were put together very quickly. Would remind people in the community that we do still have scholarships available for the hybrid program. And so if you need someone, some place for your kids during the other days that they aren't in school, we do have scholarship funds available. So please contact the recreation center and they will put you in touch with that information. So very good programs and really proud of what the Park and Rec group has been able to put together for this. And Mitch, we will take principles in these programs as well, so. Yeah, reserve a spot for me because I'm going to need one. That's it, mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Sheri. That's very impressive. Thanks for pulling that together with you and your staff. Okay, just a few reminders. We have Mayor's Fall Cleanup Week coming up, the the week of October fifth through the ninth. Again, that's October fifth through the ninth on your regular garbage pickup day. So in preparation for that, there is early or extra pickup for everyone the week before. So actually, this Friday, September twenty fifth, for homes south of the interstate, you can put out your trash container. And it'll be just an extra pickup for that week. And then for the homes north of the interstate, that would be on Monday, September twenty eighth. And it's just an opportunity for you to get rid of some of your trash that you would put out for Mayor's Cleanup, but instead put it inside the containers. It's a little easier for the city to to collect and empty that. If you do, if you have trash, it'll fit into the containers. The the usual rules apply to Mayor's Cleanup as far as no electronics or hazardous materials or tires or construction material and so forth. But again, that's coming up. Also, and Kelly, I may ask you to help me a little bit with this. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we moved the farmer's market on Monday from the Aquatic Center parking lot to Ninth Street in the Iowa River Landing. And there were some concerns expressed by a few people wondering if that was the right decision to make. But, you know, honestly, the farmer's market has been struggling in its present, in its previous location. And we were, and the person that was organizing it for the city and in the in the Parks and Rec Department was no longer with us. And so it seemed to be the time was right to try something different, just to see if we can rejuvenate that program into something more. And it sounds like the results have been really encouraging. And Kelly, you want, you know, the numbers better than I do. Can you share?
Yeah, we've had great success with the farmer's market in the Iowa River Landing. We have the existing vendors that moved over with us have had a tremendous increase in sales. And so on the very first week, two of the vendors, one tripled their sales. And the other one ran out of items because they didn't have, they weren't anticipating the increase in numbers. And we also have had an increase in numbers of vendors as well. So after the first week, we had six more vendors reach out to us that want to participate in the program. So that's been a a great side benefit of this is we've got more vendors and they're doing more sales than they've ever had before.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Good to hear. Last thing that I have is that we have a couple vacancies on on two different boards in the city due to resignations of people that moved out of the city. So very soon, the city clerk will be advertising these, but it's for the Board of Adjustment and for the Library Board. So in the next week or so, look for an announcement on that. And as the, as was the earlier discussion, we will work with Kevin Sanders to make sure that we try as hard as possible to get a diverse pool of applicants. But again, that'll be for unexpired terms on the Board of Adjustment and then also on the Library Board. So look for more information to come on that. Okay, city attorney's report.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Kevin?
I have nothing either.
Okay, thank you. Committee and council members report. Mitch, we'll start with you this evening.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I just want to piggyback on what Sheri was talking about because I think this partnership with the city and trying to help out during this time is really remarkable. And a lot of that came out of the the COVID task force that I represent Corvoo on. And I just want to do provide a website. Also, it's icarea together dot com. That's icarea together dot com and you can backslash and type in NESTs. And it talks a lot about in detail what Sheri was explaining. And there's a whole host of, there's a whole return to learn piece that is for families who are trying to navigate through this tough time. So I would really encourage people to check in on that. And finally, I just I would feel a little remiss not to speak about the passing of School Court Justice Ruth Barry Ginsburg because one of my favorite quotes came from her that said, fight for things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. And I think that's so important as we talk about so many important issues that are facing our city and it's not the loudest voice or who counts his or her chest the loudest, but it's it's really about forming coalitions and and moving together. And I really appreciate the city reaching out to the NAACP. And I hope that won't just be a one time thing and that it won't just be the NAACP because I think there's a lot of community groups all around that really represent people who have not had a voice and some of our most marginalized groups. And I would really maybe encourage us to maybe think monthly or something to reach out to some of these groups and invite them to come and speak to council so that we can hear what's going on with that. And finally, I just want to say, I thought the arena opening was was a great event. It really, I think, got people excited for this. And I'm hoping that now that we are kind of up and running, maybe we can pick you the second or the fourth Tuesday to get an arena code or arena update on a regular basis for council. So we kind of know what's going on because I think it's it's kind of the buzz of the town and people are wanting updates. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Oh, Lori, what do you have for us tonight?
I too would like to thank everyone who was involved with the arena and the Green State Field House, the city and Convention Visitors Bureau, the builders and oh, just architects, all that that took place in order for this to become true. And we talked about how many years it's been since the very beginning of the redoing of the Iowa River Landing area. And that was a joy to kind of reminisce about what that area used to look like and how it is now. And those who were involved in helping us finance that area also. And our representatives at the state and federal level helping us continuing to be interested in projects that we have here in Corvoo. And that's because of our great leadership, our executive administrators who are able to communicate and keep reaching out to those who can help us in those areas to promote better living for our community. Also, the Center for Performing Arts is opening again and they have their staff back and they have three different projects that they're working on. There's a Yugen Spiel, I never pronounce that right, Yulenspiel, Puppet Theater and Songs for a New World and also art. And those things will be happening the end of September through October. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of things. One of the the first things I had was just a question for Sheri about the some of the programming, specifically the NEST programming. Do you know what the the transport, what kind of transportation is being arranged and and provided so people can access?
We set them up in the neighborhoods that so they're walkable. So Borlaug and Kirkwood can walk to Life Church. Central can walk to the southern, Central can walk to Old Town Hall. And Genesis Church is right over the interstate for the northern Corvooville kids and Kirkwood kids on that end of Tenth Street. So we, I was trying to be very strategic about that because we didn't want to get into any kind of transportation.
Okay. And then I have another transportation related question. I know we have offered free bus rides on Election Day in the past. I think it would be fabulous if we could do that for the the special election and the the general election as well. So if we could. So if we could look into that option, that would be awesome. We want to make sure everybody, as many people as possible, are able to um participate in in the elections. I also wanted to thank everyone for the um opening of the arena. It's very exciting. Thanking all of the city staff, our partners at the the C V B, all of our community partners that helped um make that possible. One of the things that I am really looking forward to and I'm very excited about is all of the um community programming that is is going to be held at the arena. In addition to to some of the other programming. I want to make sure that as many people as possible are able to uh utilize that beautiful facility, no matter where they live in the community. Um, I want to make sure the entire community gets gets to enjoy that um that awesome space. And finally, I um like Mitch, just wanted to um, you know, uh, comment on the legacy of um Justice uh Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She, you know, I think a lot of women don't realize how much of an impact she had on on our lives. Um, women, because of her work, are able to sign a mortgage without a man. They're able to have a bank account without a male cosigner. And um have a workplace protections that we would not have had if it were not for Justice Ginsburg's work. And uh Mitch, I think my uh favorite quote was um when when asked what she, how she wanted to be remembered. She said, as someone who used whatever talent she had to work to the very best of her ability and to help repair tears in her society. To make things a little better through the use of whatever ability she has. And that's something that is a tremendous inspiration to me and can be an inspiration to all of us, I believe. And she also said, women belong in all of the places where decisions are being made. So I will leave you with that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Megan. And Jill, what words of wisdom do you have for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as the council liaison for the Parks and Rec Department, I was trying to get myself pumped up to report off on the NESTS. And the hybrid and full-day programs. And I am so grateful to Kelly that he called on Sherry and made her say all those things because she did an outstanding job. Um, but to really go over it in detail at a meeting that we had uh last night, I am just so impressed with. Her and her staff and how she's reached out to partners uh to do this so safely and to help our community. So I just wanted to do an extra shout out to her. Um, and then also another shout out to Ellen because that was one huge amount of money that she got on that grant for us for the. For that uh diverging diamonds. I did not anticipate that would happen, so that was exciting news. Um, then I too, mourning with the nation on the devastating loss of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Um, it was a very emotional day on Friday. I didn't think it would hit me that hard, but it really did, so. Um, and then finally, I just want to put it out there to please vote on the twenty-ninth. Um, Corvusville has had quite a a a busy summer, I would say. So I think your voice, your vote matters. So let's try to get more than that tiny little miniscule percentage of turnout and and let us hear what you want for your community and show up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jill, and I'll just uh add a little piece to what the last item. Um, folks that uh can can vote right now or I mean, um, between now and September twenty-ninth by going to the county administration building during operating hours. And uh Diana and I went there today and and cast our ballots because uh we may not be here next Tuesday. So I want to make sure we got our vote in, so.
And now, what what time, what time are the polls open on Tuesday?
Seven, I think.
Seven.
Until seven to eight?
I believe so.
Seven to eight, yeah.
Seven AM to eight PM.
Okay. Yeah, seven AM to eight PM, yeah.
And all seven precincts will vote in their regular spot except for three, which will be at the Kirkwood Regional Center.
Very good. Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to uh adjourn from our formal meeting.
I moved.
Moved by Dodd, seconded. Is that Gross?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are.